Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Supervisor Wareheim?
Here.
Councilman McCarthy?
Here.
Councilwoman Noick?
Here.
Councilman Lowman?
Here.
Okay, again, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This evening, before we start the presentation by the agency, we have two resolutions, so we're gonna just take a moment to vote the resolutions. Due to time constraints, we need to get these on. They're both advertisements for public hearings in the future. When we finish that, I will then introduce the agency, Mr. Jay Silverstein, to come up. He will be doing a presentation to everyone with his staff here, and after the presentation is complete, the agency will remain here to answer any of your questions, answers, concerns, et cetera, as we will as well. This is Mr. Matt Jacobowski, our town attorney. So soon as the presentation is concluded, we'll all be here. People can come up. We can, if you have questions for us, that's fine. If you have questions for the agency, that's fine as well. Okay? All right, Mr. Polio, the resolutions?
Okay. First, we have a town board special meeting, January 2nd, 11:00 a.m., for approval. We have two resolutions advertised for public hearing. Town Board to authorize the town board to advertise for public hearing to be held at Town Hall, 99 West Main Street, Smithtown, February, Tuesday, February 4th, 2022 p.m. To consider the proposed amendments to Chapter 322 of the Town Code regarding site plan exemptions. The second one, the town board to authorize the town clerk to advertise for public hearing to be held at Town Hall, 99 West Main Street, Smithtown, on Tuesday, February 4th, at 2:00 p.m. To consider the proposed amendments to Chapter 322 of the Town Code regarding mini-storage warehouse. Councilman Lowman?
Yes.
Councilwoman Noick?
Yes.
Councilman McCarthy?
Yes.
Supervisor Wareheim?
Yes. Okay, that concludes our resolutions. Thank you for your indulgence. I will now ask to come up, Mr. Jay Silverstein, Executive Director of the Center for Developmental Disabilities. Mr. Silverstein, welcome.
Welcome, and thank you, and good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the community regarding the proposed development group home on, in Northport, on 77 Route, Old Route 25A. So, thank you for the opportunity. I want to start with a brief history of the organization, then bring that into the present, and then describe the proposed project. So, the Center for Developmental Disabilities was founded in 1958 by five families in Leverton to provide an educational setting for the children prior to the state law IDEA, which allowed for students and provided the students the opportunity to be educated in their home school districts. Students didn't have, weren't, if they couldn't attend the local school, the local school district was not required to provide education. That started in 1958. 1964, based upon need, the school grew in to include a residential component. 1974, those students became adults, aged out of the educational facility, the center developed day programs. When the parents of those children aged, residential facilities were established for those children who became adults who needed that service. Currently, the center operates, serves 110 children at our campus in Woodbury, which is across the street from the High School, 110 children at the school, 33 of those children live in our residence. We operate 15 group homes across Nassau and Suffolk County, and five supportive living situations, small apartments, where individuals live in the communities. This, the proposed house presently is for seven of our graduates from our day program who are part of our residential program. Those seven students have gone to school together and lived together for over a decade, some of them. We know them very well, and their families reside in Long Island, ranging from Massapequa, Siocet, Niskent, and local communities. We selected the current site based upon the developmental needs of these students, and also the, the house and the property, we believe, will provide a good meshing with the community. There's, the driveway has a lot of parking opportunities, there's land and buffers, so there's privacy for the student, the individuals, and the community residents. We, just so you have a little sense of how, how the program functions, is the individuals will live in the home, and during the day, some of them go to work, some of them go to our day programs. In the evenings, weekends, they'll be participating in community-appropriate community activities, community events, shopping at, using the businesses in the local community, and they'll be integrated into, as part of the fabric of the community. The way the house is run, there's approximately two to three staff who provide support for the individuals, and we do have staff that work overnight as well. They, if, the, if there's any concerns, I've already received a couple of phone calls from people maybe in this audience, and I'm available. I'm an active and engaged executive director. We want to be part of the community, and I'm always available to answer questions, talk, engage. Like any neighbor, we take care of our property, we take care of the homes. We, we want to be proud residents of the community, and like I said, the supervision we provide and the training for the staff and the management is ongoing, consistent, and we're, we're quite highly responsive neighbors. So, I, I think that covers my primary points, and, do you want me to open the questions? How do you want?
Okay. We did not have speaker cards here. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to make a comment on this for the record? If we do, you can come up to the mic. You have three minutes. There's a three-minute limit?
Three minutes?
That's correct. And then we will stay, we will stay, and the agency will stay here afterwards for-
You've been there for 40 years. How is three minutes going to match?
We have a three-minute limit on the public portions of these hearings. So, you can-
I think that's unfair.
Okay, well, that's all regulations. You can make your statement, sir, and then you can remain afterwards. We'll be here, and for any additional information that you want to give us, or the agency.
How does one, how does one express their concerns in three minutes for all the questions that one would have?
Well, we'll be here afterwards to concern, to answer your concerns and your questions. We will stay here. So will the agency.
Well, I've lived in, my name is Joe Campanello. It's Joseph Campanolo, actually, and I reside on Old 25A. The thing that I found objectionable to this thing is how we were notified. I have the feeling that if it wasn't for the town of Smithtown, we wouldn't have known anything. So, I, at least I tip my hat to the town of Smithtown for doing the right thing. The thing that I also didn't really care for is the fact that it was a notification, and I'm not faulting the town of Smithtown, I guess it's because there's a process, and you have to follow that process, in notifying the residents. The thing that I found objectionable was, surprisingly, is that we were notified during the holidays, and a lot of people are either away, a lot of people are, you know, this is a festification, it's a holiday, it's, people are, people are trying to make a nice holiday for themselves, and, and we get this letter, and we know nothing about this CDD? Is it, is it, am I pronouncing it correctly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Developmental abilities, disabilities, excuse me. So, it leaves a preponderous opening of questions of, who are these people? I mean, this gentleman, Mr. Silverstein, is it?
Yes.
You know, very elegantly, you know, explain a general broad stroke of what, what they are, and how they came about, and how they started, and everything else. But I still don't understand, is there a concern? What is their mental, shall we say, handicap, if you want to call it that? I'm not well-versed in that area. So, it's upsetting to me not to know. I have a granddaughter, I have... Sorry.
It's okay.
I have a wife that's not well. She's severely, she's severely crippled, and I, I take care of her. I'm a disabled veteran, 1964, 1967, USA Air Force, and I've been suffering with my, my injuries ever since. The thing that upsets me is that, how do we know the safety of our family? How do we know the psychological background that these people may have? What is, what if they wander onto our property?
Right.
How do we know that they're gonna be supervised all the time?
Your time is up, but let me say this-
My time is up.
Yes, let me say this. That's the purpose of this town board staying here, the agency staying here-
I'm sorry, I'm a little hard of hearing-
Okay, that's okay.
Because, thanks to the service, I suffer from tinnitus.
Okay. We will remain here, we, the town board, and the agency, and our attorney. I believe we can answer all those questions this evening. That's what this presentation is about, so that we can answer any of your concerns.
Well, let me, another couple of minutes, at least.
It's, it's gonna be the same thing, sir, honestly. We will answer all your concerns, everything you just-
What about the, what about the tax base?
Okay.
There's a tax deferred to a certain point? How does that affect-
We will, we will, we will be here to answer all those questions. We will stay here. We're not gonna go anywhere.
Three minutes, that's, that's what you give everybody?
Correct. Okay.
I'm sorry, you represent who?
Excuse me?
You, you represent who?
I represent the town of Smithtown residents.
You represent the Smithtown residents?
Correct.
You're with the town of Smithtown?
I'm the town supervisor.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay, nothing to be sorry about.
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't go to these functions all the time.
No, that's okay. There's nothing to be sorry about. We will, we will stay here and answer, you have, if you have 20 concerns, I believe I will tell you, we can answer just about all of them right here this evening.
Yeah, and I just want to make one quick comment-
Okay.
About the parking, and about it being a buffer zone to the, to the community. I, I disagree with that wholeheartedly, and I'll tell you why. You have 25A. When we moved in, in 1979, 40 years ago, it was a novelty to hear a car go by.
Right.
Now, it's a novelty not to hear a car go by. It's obvious that the DOT must have information on the fact that that is a heavily traveled road. There's no guardrail.
Again, we're gonna, we're gonna answer all these concerns, sir. Okay?
Three minutes.
As soon as we're finished-
And we have to worry about our nest egg of investing in our house.
We will be here to answer all your concerns.
Agreed.
You're welcome.
Thank you for serving.
Is there anyone else in the audience? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Maron Brosniak. I am one of the residents. I live on Woodhull Lane, which is approximately a block over from the proposed site. I did call Mr. Silverstein, I'm sorry, that was me. I got in the mail a letter from a concerned neighbor. That's how we received notice on the other side. We were not made aware either. I am a former Assistant Town Attorney from the town of Huntington. I moved to Fort Solanga. I have a five-year-old and a nine-year-old, both which are in Kings Park. We have a fabulous district. What I wanted to, I have a few questions, and I also spoke to one of the Assistant Town Attorneys in the town. I wanted to find out some information before I actually made any decisions. One of the first things I did was I checked out the law, and I understand under the mental hygiene law, under 4134, there's the group homes and the new type of, you know, the, what this, what the country's trying to do with putting group homes and taking out of the institution. I just wanted to get more information, but what I did find on the map, like the supervisor has cited to, is that there are over almost 42 sites in the town of Smithtown, three of which, with, including this site, will be in Fort Solanga. So, there's a couple of issues. I know, it's my understanding that the town of Smithtown also challenged a few years ago based on the same issue, and we failed. But, we did an Article 78, is that correct? And we failed on that. A lot of recent, I just, I mean, again, this is a few days that I got notice of this as well. A lot of the towns are now currently challenging and going to Suffolk County Supreme Court. They're taking it to another level because municipalities are sort of, they're preempted now by the federal law. My questions are, now, you had stated, did you get a traffic impact study with that proposed lot? My neighbors that are in my vicinity, we've, I'm sorry-
Just one minute.
I'll finish, yes, thank you. We have, we went over to the property and we checked it out. It's primarily front yard, yardage, yes, and there's a very long, it's a very dangerous intersection coming off of 25A onto Old 25A. If you're gonna have vans, you're gonna have workers there, you know, there are concerns. So, we are unaware of that, and we, we are concerned. The other major point for me to state before my time is up is that, when I moved here, you know, it's the one-acre parcel, we want the privacy, but now what we're doing is, we're changing the character of the neighborhood because although this is a single-family home, and you're stating it's up to six to seven residents, under the law, you're allowed up to 14, correct? They're over on one of the houses, I took a ride over, have 10 now. So, we are changing the dynamic, and in Kings Park, I also went up to 151, which is where Pilgrim State is, has overflow on two residential homes there. Now, if you go out there in the summer, I can't take my children, I'll finish up. Rita's ISIS, I have, there's people there that are there involuntarily but are roaming the town in Kings Park. I cannot, I no longer take my children to Nukato. There are, I mean, you just don't feel safe if I'm just with my small children walking around because they, they do not have anybody that are looking over them. So, just so that you understand, I too am gonna do my due diligence and find out. I know we're in the 10th hour because you did receive notice from November into December, so I think this is just a public hearing to inform everybody.
Correct.
But, at this point, within the next day or so, the board has to decide whether to deny, find a different location, agree to it, or so forth. Is that correct, Supervisor?
Yes, correct. You can, you'll be able to raise these issues with our attorney. We were gonna remain here.
Okay.
Okay?
And when will your vote be?
Excuse me?
The vote, the vote on this?
There is no vote on this.
Oh, so you've already decided? Okay.
There is no vote. They're not voted on.
Okay, so you're just moving forward? Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to continue with regards to that intersection. I happen to live-
Please.
Laura Sarowitz at 10 Old Route 25A, which is actually directly across from the proposed site. I'd be able to see from my bedroom into the windows there. I've only lived there since the summer. I've seen numerous accidents, and I've had several dead deer in front of my house because it is such a dangerous intersection with increased vans. There is not adequate parking, especially in the winter. It is a very steep hill that it would have to be street parking. If there's landscape crews, we wouldn't be able to pull out of our driveway and see out there. What can be done, if the site were to be allowed, to close up that intersection, make people go around so that people aren't coming around the blind turn with excess vehicle and pedestrian traffic in front of this house? That would, the point I would like to have remedied. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Joe Fuzaro at 40 Old Route 25A. I want to thank you for hearing everybody out. Thank you for the introduction. The organization seems well-needed. I do have concerns about it as well. I have family members in similar situations, so I appreciate what you're doing, but I do have concerns as well, and thank you for your service. A couple concerns, how old are all the students? Me and another neighbor across the street from me went around to 13 other homes, and just scoped it out and saw it was all about to see what we could bring up at this meeting to address in advance. We saw a lot of older people, I know the thing said, younger students, so that was a concern. Traffic, as you brought up, it's a, it is a very bad intersection there. The property is on a corner of Old Route 25A and 25A. 25A is 50 miles an hour on that road. There are a lot of accidents on both ends of the block, it's a small block. I do have concerns about people roaming around for their safety and for the safety of the people driving the cars. Another major concern is ambulances, cop cars. We spoke to two other individuals that have these homes next door to them. One person said, six times a month, there's ambulances, all times of the night. Another individual said the cop cars come in packs of two-plus. A single cop will not go in these houses by themselves at that particular location. That raises a concern of safety. I don't know exactly what it's about. They had mentioned, you know, people not on medications, that type of thing. 50 miles an hour, yeah, we visited 13 homes. Just a, a quick history, I grew up in Huntington area, Green Lawn area.
One minute.
Okay. I've lived in Huntington Station for the majority of my life, and the street that I moved into got extremely bad gangs, drugs, guns, all types of things that went very bad over the 13-year period. I saved every penny, built the equity in my house so I could move to this beautiful neighborhood. I paid five times the taxes I was paying in Huntington Station to get away from the cops, the ambulances, the lights, the traffic. So, it, it, I do believe it's gonna change the, oops, sorry.
The character of the neighborhood.
And again, just driving around to the 13 homes, there was anywhere from zero to four buses, and from two to three to eight cars at each of these homes. So, that's what we're expecting to look at every day. I'm diagonal across the street from them, so. I just wanted to voice the concerns and hope we can, we can make amends to, to the concerns. So, thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Museo, and I live on Meadowwood Lane, so about a block away, as Joe talked about before. I've lived there for 40 years as well. I also happen to be the Executive Director at Halle Keller Services for the Blind, where we operate. Ira's similar to the one that CDD is proposing to open. And as both a resident of the area and a Director of an agency, those homes have brought us nothing but accolades from the other neighborhoods that we have our houses in. We've become great neighbors with the people around us. We've never had an ambulance at any of our residences. We've never had a cop car at any of our residences. Now, I, obviously, we can't guarantee that's not gonna happen in our neighborhood, but it's not a common occurrence by any means. People are not roaming around unsupervised. The supervision is wonderful. The staff are like family to those individuals, and I think that we really need to give them the opportunity and the right to live in the same community that we all enjoy.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I live at 5 Yorktown Place, which is directly across an existing situation, ACLD, and it's completely false, what you said about not having ambulances, traffic, it's, it's completely different. We had-
Can you speak in English?
We, we had, in the last eight months, probably nine or 10 situations where we had police, ambulances, and it's, it's not calm or not, nothing. People pull up with blasting music, they have 12 bins of garbage in front of your yard, which goes everywhere if it's not picked up. We had bloody napkinses on our lawn from people like that, and I'm literally two blocks away from that. If you go down the road, McLeffton, Hastings, that's, that's where we are, and it's, it's not what you said and what people think. It's, I wouldn't, I'm considered removing just for, for those situations. What else? There's, there was an incident where my daughter came from school, she's five, and they were transporting a lady in a vehicle. She was screaming, crying, didn't want to get transported, and they're holding her back, you know, taking her to the ambulance, and I'm looking up, and my daughter's looking at the situation, where I don't have a choice to-
One minute, sir.
Sorry?
One minute.
So, you know, I don't have a choice of me protecting my child from seeing that, and it's, it's heartbreaking. I wouldn't want anybody to go through that, what I'm going through, and I don't trust anybody that's there. I never received any letters, what, what the condition of those people are. I don't know if they're on medicine. I just, you know, for the people to go there and live without, you know, neighbors knowing the conditions of them is, is heartbreaking, so feel bad for you guys.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I live at 12 Meadowwood, which is around the corner from 77. I can see the house from my house. We received the letter. It was very disconcerting, considering it was a done deal and it's already closed. My problem is, I visited on my own. I requested from the town, your town, our town, a list of all the group homes in the area in the town of Smithtown, 41, including the one on 77. I visited immediately the two that were in Fort Solanga where we are. First one I saw had four vans parked like a used car lot, several, several cars in the street along the circular driveway of a really beautiful home. The second one was a really beautiful home that I assumed, I looked back in the real estate thing, it said $800,000, they paid for that one. This one, they paid $674,000. The house that we're looking at, 77, was listed when it was first put up for sale for $500,000. Someone came in, and it only had four bedrooms. Now, it has five bedrooms. How that happens, I don't know, but it's a five, 2,500 square foot with five bedrooms with no backyard, and it's stuck on 25A. All the rest of the property is tree, so if anyone is gonna have to park there, they're gonna have to park in the street, which means we're gonna have a whole list of cars along that, our street, well, along 25A, and they will come to our side, I would guess, as well. I don't know who the people are. I don't know if they're male or female. Do they, are they all male, or are they all female? What is the age group? What are their disabilities? What are we gonna be dealing with? I mean, that's the bottom line. Our, you know, we, we moved here to be in a one-acre zone and to be in a beautiful neighborhood where we pay taxes and very strong taxes as well, and I don't feel, you know, we should have been at least notified before the house closed to, to stay where we had to stay. I don't know if it makes any difference now, but you have to get it off your chest.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Uh, excuse me, you guys are not answering questions, I hope you can answer a question.
Sir, excuse me, excuse me. Adjust the board what, the purpose of this is, when we're finished here, they're gonna answer all your questions.
Yes, right.
That remain here.
Here's my point. I'm ignorant of the fact, is this a done deal? Is the house a done deal?
Okay, yeah.
I'm following the, the supervisor's recommendation.
Is, is the house a done deal? Seventy-seven?
I believe they're, on seventy-seven, I believe they're closed on the house.
I was waiting for, I can explain that, but I was waiting until you'd like me to answer questions, I'll...
Okay.
Whenever you tell me something.
Well, this is a, this is a simple question.
Okay, no, but why don't you...
I'm ignorant of the fact, is it a done deal, the house?
Well, he'll explain that to you, he, they, they're the purchaser, so when you're, when you're finished with your questions, I'll have Mr...
I only have one other question.
Okay.
Is it or isn't it?
I'm following the...
He's gonna, he's gonna get up and answer some of these questions, okay?
Okay, if that's the ca- yes, go ahead.
No, no, I'm, I'm following the guidelines of the town and the supervisor, that's why I'm not answering the question until...
When, when you're...
Okay, so, so wait...
Sir, when you're, when you're finished, he's gonna get up and answer some of these questions.
His next question is what? Right, because his next question is probably dependent on the first answer.
Okay, so, finish your statement and then we'll, we'll proceed.
Here's, here's the next question, okay? We're all intelligent people here. Tell me what the purpose of this meeting is, if it's a done deal. Tell me what the purpose is. Questions are not being answered.
They're gonna be answered after, after we're finished here.
Everything's gonna be done afterwards. We might be here until one in the morning. Now, I, I'm, that's my point. What's the purpose of this meeting? What's the goal of this meeting? What's the objective of this meeting? If it's a done deal...
Excuse me, excuse me, let me answer you. The purpose of these meetings are, this is a policy that this administration put in place, to have the agency come here to answer questions and concerns by the residents in this area. There's no requirement to even have the meeting, quite frankly, but we believe the residents deserve it, and that's why we require an agency before they set a home to come in here and face you and us, ask questions, we have our attorney here, and we will try to explain any questions or concerns you have, we will try and answer you on that. That's the purpose of us having the hearing.
Okay, I'm glad you said that. Let's all go back to education.
Please speak into the mic.
Wait, let's all go back to education.
When a student asks the instructor a question, the instructor has to answer that question, okay?
Right.
That's the purpose of an instructor.
Mm-hmm.
There have been a lot of questions being a- asked here, and I didn't hear one good answer yet.
Okay.
Okay?
Sir, your time is up, are we ready?
I know my time is up, could I get your name? And I wonder who made up that three-minute name, too. Could I get your name, please? Michael Sitchko.
Please?
S-I-C-H-K-O. Please speak into the mic so it's on tape, please. Michael Sitchko.
S-I-C-H-K-O, it happens to be a Russian name.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is, uh, Pete Brocker, I live at one-ten old twenty-five A, I built my house on that street thirty-five years ago. Um, I'm a little annoyed that I was notified about this happening by one of my neighbors putting something in my mailbox to tell me that Smithtown, whoever these guys are, are changing the landscape of my neighborhood, all right? I feel that it's your responsibility to defend us in our neighborhood. As far as I'm concerned, Fort Solanga is one acre zone, it's single-family homes, and you're bringing in, as flowery as you wanna call it, a business. You're gonna have twenty-four hour a day supervision, you're gonna have seven people to start with living there. They're adults, are they driving cars, are they parking cars, all the, I don't know how familiar everybody is with all twenty-five A, but it's this little, small road that uses a cut-through to go to, go over to the grammar school. In the morning, cars are flying off twenty-five A at fifty-five miles an hour, zipping right down the street, you're gonna put these other cars down on the bottom of the street, nobody's notified us, it's like, it's like, uh, you're trying to pull a fast one. And then on top of it, what does it do to the immediate neighbors? What does it do to their home values? My taxes have tripled in the time I've lived in my house, and the one thing I could say is, the town of Smithtown does a very good job. Now I'm asking the town of Smithtown, what are you gonna do for me? I don't want this on my street, simple.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nobody else?
One more, maybe?
Good evening, I'm Peter and Sarah, nineteen Williamsburg Drive, Fort Solanga, so I live down the block from my other neighbor, Peter, on the bottom of, uh, the hill of Yorktown and Williamsburg on the corner, where they just put in, I guess, nine months ago, uh, the group home. We were also told, uh, first, first of all, the letters that come out are very arrogant, it's amazing how you just get these letters telling you it's a, it's a done deal, so you have, it's over. But I, I wanna just give a little color to what happens, we were told initially that they wanted to be good neighbors and that they wanted to not change the community, and, um, they weren't gonna have, we really weren't even notice it. Well, they put a lot of money into the house, they doubled the size of it, they were told that there were six or seven, there's now twelve in there. We never see the residents because I think they are physically unable, but the staff is what the problem is. We have, I think, three shifts that come into the, our community is a dead-end community, no outlet anyway, and we're on the dead-end street and they're on the top of the hill. It's dangerous, it's not gonna get plowed right, 'cause they do park out there and I can, I constantly have to make phone calls. Uh, they guaranteed us that they put in a big extra driveway that really doesn't belong in the area, they have plenty of parking, whenever they get new staff, they're all out on the street, which makes it da- dangerous to the six or seven or eight times now, we've had ambulances come in that area. Uh, I lived there since nineteen ninety-three. I, I think I could count two times that I had an ambulance in my neighborhood. Once was with my mother who was at my house. Now I think we've had seven or eight in the last few months. They block off the street, my poor neighbor, Peter, there, he can't get in and out of his driveway, they use his driveway as a turnaround point because there's no way the police can get in and out of there. They have to back the ambulances up, they have to, they cut off his street, he's got kids, my other neighbor has children, we get lit up at night, um, I'm a runner, I'm out in the morning, I'm out there in one of their shift changes, we have no sidewalks, um, we have kids out on the street now, 'cause the neighborhood has gotten younger, which is nice. They're at school buses, the staff comes in, we had to call the police because they're driving like maniacs, making turns, um, blind, blind spots, I've had to stand up with my hands like this, I know, 'cause I know where they're gonna make these turns and be, and make them sharp. Um, it's just changed the whole, it's just changed the whole dynamics of the neighborhood. Uh, I don't know what they do with their staffing, but I've had, they're very nice to me when I call, but it, it gets better for a week or two, and then it gets back down to the same, same pattern. Uh, I don't know many of those, I just got my tax bill, it's up another four and a half percent, I never mind paying the taxes, but I look at these houses and they come into the neighborhood, they're supported by our state taxes, they're supported by, they don't pay the, the, uh, taxes on the houses, which, and they're a drain on the services, it's, um, I just don't think they will, I also think that...
Sir, your time is up.
It's very close.
Your time is up.
As, less than a mile away from where we are, don't they have a concentration, uh, limit? Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is John Lowenger, I live on Wood Hall Lane, I've been there for forty years. I'm not as concerned about the need for these people to have someplace to live, that doesn't really bother me that much. I'm assuming that when I talk any kind of a drug situation, but that's for you to answer later. My question goes more towards the staffing and the supervision. I am sure that we're low-paid jobs, minimum wage supervision on the overnights, and my question would be, what can they do? I come from a transportation industry, I know what it's like to have low-paid employees, transit employees, you're there for a month, then someone else comes in. How can you, I guess you can't guarantee, that's the wrong word, how can you explain to us the type of supervision that will be there for these people?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Supervisor and members of the board. My name is Ryan Hild, I'm here on behalf of the Fort Solanga Association. Um, I feel that, uh, the neighbors tonight have asked a lot of great questions, um, we prepared a bunch, uh, but most of them sort of are directed at the community, so I'm going to direct them to, uh, the board, uh, as concerns that we hope are answered later. Safety being the number one concern. We'd like to know, do they know what the average amount of emergency nine-one-one phone calls there have been to their other homes? How often, in other words, is nine-one-one called on their other homes? How long do the residents of, of this particular group live at the home? On average, are they there for a year, are they there for six months, are they there for five years? What sort of, what sort of duration, uh, and what sort of turnover in the residents will be there? Is there a curfew for the residents? Uh, is there a time where lights are to be out? Is, or are they all, are they independent and permitted to, to do as they please at all hours? Will the property be outfitted with an alarm and security? Will the security system, uh, be linked to their corporate office? Who is responsible within the group or within the corporate office to handle complaints from the residents? We asked the town, we'll ask the town of Smithtown, who is the oversight board within the state? We understand that the Office of Mental Hygiene is certainly, uh, involved, but we'd like, we feel that the folks need to know, especially those who live there, who oversees and keeps those, and keeps people informed should they have questions about that group, about that particular property. The structure of the building, are there any modifications planned? If there are, what are they? Are they, do they require variances? Are they, are they the type of changes, uh, that in essence would just be accepted by the building department as is? Is there something else hap- is there something else changing, such as the basement being converted to living? The entrance and exits, the egress, are, if they are, if they're not permitted to leave after a certain time, how many entrances and exits are there and, and what sort of safety measures are there, uh, for maintaining the residents? Staffers, how many staffers will be there? How many shifts will there be? Uh, how many will be there during the day, during the night? And what is the average length of employment for these staffers? How long have they been on the job? Um, and I see my time is about up. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Silverstein, would you like to come up now? And ladies and gentlemen, um, let me start by saying this, I noticed Mr. Silverstein took a number of notes, so allow him to give his presentation, and again, we will remain here, he will remain here, after he answers the questions that he made notes on for you folks. If there are any additional questions for us, the agency or our town attorney will remain here, so you can come up after he speaks.
Thank you. Um, I did take copious notes and really tried to address as many questions as I could recall in, in my notes, and I will answer them and then stay here as late as people want to continue to answer questions. I do wanna just say that, they're good questions, um, I understand the concerns, I'm a homeowner, a parent, I would have many of the same concerns. I'm here this evening not to tell you stories or, or promise that things I can't guarantee I can keep, but to answer the questions and to be honest, and if I don't know and I can't guarantee, I will say so. So, I, I'm gonna start, I guess, my notes are pretty all over the place, but from the beginning, which is, the, we purchased the house, this is not, the final approval has not occurred. We purchased the house because, um, the market is such that if we didn't purchase the house, we would have lost the house to another buyer, and, um, we, if, if the proposal for some reason doesn't go through with the town zoning board with OPWDD, um, we would sell the house. So, just be clear on that, that the purchase doesn't indicate that it's a done deal. We purchased it because we would've lost it and we thought it was a good opportunity for our, our individuals. Um, notification, um, we follow the, the requirements of, of the Patavan law, which was referenced by one of the speakers with a numeric code, um, we notify the town as we're required and the town notifies you all. You know, I'm, I apologize if that had occurred during the holiday season, but we have a timetable we follow, so, um, that, that's what we did with that, so I understand it was an inconvenience, but we, we had to notify the town, um, and that's, we follow those guidelines, and that's how that occurred. Maybe on those two issues, I can see if there's more specific questions on those two specific issues about the sale and the notification, if not, I'll go into the, the, I think, uh, very substantive concerns and understandable concerns. Let's start with the, the students who are graduating. What, yeah?
You notified the town, the town of Smithtown didn't notify, is that correct?
I, I don't, that's...
No, excuse me, I couldn't hear you.
He notified the town of Smithtown, but the town of Smithtown didn't notify the...
We, we notify within two hundred feet of the site...
It's five hundred acres.
Five hun- I'm sorry, five hundred feet.
Five hundred feet. The area's on, so that's two houses, I think, so that doesn't seem right to me.
So, the, the individuals, um, they are seven students who are graduating when they turn twenty-one at the end of this school year, they are, they live with us, they have developmental disabilities, autism and other, and intellectual limitations and disabilities, that, that, that is their disability profile. They, they're all young men, twenty-one years of age, um, we know them, we know their families. Uh, they are, um, there was questions about drugs and there, there are no histories of those kinds of problems, they are, are autistic and limited intellectually, uh, abled individuals with a variety of, of, of skills, strengths, and, um, I know all the boys and they're, they're, they're nice, good, young, healthy men.
Sorry, sir?
Yes?
How many do they staff, like, so you are, on your ratio of seven, respectively, um, how many, how many, like, over the twenty-four hours?
Yeah, sure.
And do they sleep there with them?
Sure. During, during the day, there's three staff members during waking hours approximately, um...
Seven to seven.
For seven, and overnight, two. But understand that during the day, they will not be, on the weekends, you know, but they'll be out and about, but during the weekdays, they're in, they're working or going to our day program and then out in the community, so, um, but there's three shifts, uh, with two overnight and three during the day, and, uh, there's also, I'll, I'll speak to some other questions that people had, which were very good supervision. We have, each, each house has an assistant manager and a manager. They're there, um, for five shifts minimally each, and they are present on the weekends, uh, again, not every shift, three shifts each weekend, but they're present for supervision, they're supervised by an assistant director, who each assistant director supervises three or four houses, and then there's a director that supervises all the houses, and I oversee the, the agency, so there's multiple levels of supervision. All the staff are, um, criminal and motor vehicle background checked.
Anonymally?
Uh, yes, once you, once you put them through, any notification we receive, where it's on an ongoing list of, um, exclusions and anything that comes up, we would get, any hits... and anything that comes up, we would get, any hits on their criminal traffic violations, we get. Other questions?
Cars?
What's that?
The driving cars?
Oh, sure, so let me answer that question. The staff drive cars, yes. Yes, the individuals do not drive cars at this time. None of our, none of the individuals drive cars. So in effect, the, there'll be one to two small minivans to take the children, young adults, to take them to the day program, to events, to community outings. And as far as, and the staff will have one car, two to three staff members. That, part of the attraction for us to the property, and I do know someone said about the driveway being sloped. I've parked there with three or four to five cars and we were doing architects' visits and open houses for the administration to assess the house. You, part of the reason, we want to not be disruptive and not have two vans and three cars parked on the street and block up, moving out of your driveways. Even though the driveway is sloped, when you go up the driveway, there's a fairly level part of the driveway that you can fit four or five cars. And going down a driveway, you could fit eight cars in that driveway. So I, again, again, this is my opinion, that the, what we look for is, when we select houses, is to have a driveway that is suitable for as many cars as possible. Yes, sir?
I disagree with that and I'll tell you why.
Sure.
Because the living there, 40 years, I helped my neighbor that lived there. And they were, they got to a point in their stage of their life where they needed help themselves. And as a good neighbor, I would help shop for them, I would do a number of things for them. One of the things that I can tell you from experience is that that driveway is the driveway from hell. And it's so difficult to manage and maneuver. And you cannot, you cannot, absolutely not, park eight cars there. You have room to park two cars in front of the garage. You have room to park two cars in front of the hedges. You know I know that.
In the driveway?
Because you've been there, right?
Many times, yeah.
Yes, you know what I'm talking about and I have the photos to show you.
Sure.
Okay, so here's the deal. If you put two more cars behind those two other cars, right? And there's an emergency, let's say the fire alarm goes off. Let's say there's an emergency in the house, let's say there's a medical emergency. Let's say you're expecting the ambulance. How are you going to get those other cars away, out? You can't even back up. You can barely back up just with the first four cars that I just mentioned, two of which are in front of the garage and two of which are in front of the hedges. That's it. Those cars can, if you do a number of K turns, if you do a number of K turns, you can get those cars out. But that's going to eat up time.
When you're talking about the cars by the hedges, you're talking about in the driveway? The hedges?
Talking about, out of the driveway, there's a level, a plateau, if you will.
Right.
That is level parking and it's minimal.
So to answer just, and when I said eight cars, I was just making a point of how the spaces, we're not going to have, there's not going to typically be eight cars. One to two vans, two to three cars, so we're looking at four to five cars. So that's the intention.
Will there be parking on the street?
Again, if there's, for example, we have, like, at any house, we have holiday parties. So the guys might have a holiday party. At that, at that time, there, there might be more cars than the four or five, absolutely.
Who would they typically invite?
Me, myself, the family members, you know, there's, it's like any other...
Other occupants from other homes?
That it's possible, but usually it's the, usually it's the family members and administration. Occasionally, occasionally, but not frequently. It's usually just the families of the individuals. And again, it's like, it's really like any other resident with, with obviously a little bit of a difference because of the nature of the individuals. But families take their children home for weekends, for holidays. So it's not, there's not going to be 30 cars there.
And will the other cars picking up these individuals who are residents? That are these, one or two of these residents that make up seven residents in this house?
The family members will visit the children, take them home for holidays and things like that, sure.
So you're saying it's on the weekend, typically after seven, and there's two cars coming to visit the residents?
No, that's not what I said. I said that, yeah, what I was saying is that we, there will be an occasional holiday party. So no, there's not seven, every weekend, seven families aren't picking up seven residents, dropping them back and forth. That's not the typical weekend, no.
See, the problem is, in the wintertime, that driveway has a very, very dangerous turn to it. And if you can't maneuver the car as, for the, just the four spots that I mentioned, two of which are in front of the garage and two of which are in front of the hedges, you, at that point, you pull in headfirst. That's typical of what people do, because that's, that's how, the only safe way to do it. And then when you try to leave, you then have to make a number of K turns to leave. And you have limited space to try and exit because you immediately are facing that dangerous turn. And that's why it's dangerous.
I understand, I understand.
So what happens if the fire department is called? What happens if the ambulance is called? Because for the occupant's safety, their own safety, and including the staff? What if something happens and the fire department doesn't have access to the house because there are, let's say, five parts?
Understood, yeah.
Will you do that?
Yeah.
Or medical?
Sure, my answer, I'll answer it in two parts. The first part, I'll answer an earlier question about the police and ambulances. It's infrequent. It's infrequent, they're young, healthy individuals. There's no history of the kinds of problem behaviors and drug use and people mention things like that. It's infrequent, the 911 and ambulance calls. We're not, also, we're not, it's approved for seven individuals. To answer an earlier question, the garage will be turned into two bedrooms. So that's how we have the seven bedrooms.
Garage will be turned into two bedrooms?
Correct, correct.
What other things are going to be planned?
That's the only, the only change that we're doing is the garage into two bedrooms.
And there are going to be seven occupants?
Seven occupants, each with their own bedroom.
And the staff members are going to have also bedrooms as well?
No, no. There was, the staff will not be sleeping there.
Okay, so where are they going to park?
Who, the staff, those were the two to three staff members I spoke about with those two to three cars.
That's what that represents?
Yes, yes. So there's not, they're not overnight sleeping there. There's typically two staff on overnight to supervise while the individuals are sleeping. They're there just to assist and make sure everything's going okay.
Not knowing their mental capacity, not knowing what, we know...
I can tell you.
Other than what you just told...
Yeah, what else would you like to know?
What is their psychological profile?
The, I guess I, I can't speak individually to individual students. What I can say is they have autism and developmental disabilities, which is having intellectual disability. But as far as psychological profile, if you, I'll surmise where you might be worrying. These are not students who have major psychiatric histories, violence and, you know, those types of behaviors. Not, that's not what we're talking about, autism and developmental disabilities.
Because as I mentioned before, because I only had three minutes.
Yeah.
One of the concerns that I had is that the majority of the people that live in this neighborhood in Fort Solanga have in-ground pools, they have their families, they have their younger children. What's to say that for some reason, one of them breaks free and wanders onto the property?
Sure.
And let me just add one more thing. They go onto the property and we have dogs. And these dogs are not killer dogs, but they're dogs that are trained to do like any other dog. They're going to look to protect the property and the owner. They know the owner, they know the property, but they're not going to know a stranger. And in my book, if they approach, they're going to be checked by that dog.
Understood.
What happens then?
Sure, well, I'm going to answer the first question first. We, the supervision we have is not perfect, but it's good. We know what we're doing, we have a lot of supervision and training. Yes, like any home, children, adolescents wander out. Our supervision is greater than your average family home. We have the individuals, if there is someone who is at risk of something, what you're talking about, elopement, which they're, these individuals aren't as a whole, but they are watched more closely. So the supervision is increased versus what you might expect then. So again, would, does an individual in a group home wind up eloping from the house? On rare occasions, yes. But again, we provide supervision, training and presence to reduce the likelihood of that happening. So I think that the risk is not as great as you might assume as I described the individuals, given the amount of staff that are there supervising, seven young men. And by the way, I'm going to ad lib here. I know these young men. People and the families are going to get to know them and they're really lovely, wonderful, young people. And I can tell you in my experience, I've been working with individuals with disabilities for 30 years. I have found that as much as you all and your community helps them live a satisfying and enriching life, I have found that the individuals with disabilities actually serve the communities compassion, empathy, understanding of differences as much, if not more, as the reverse. I apologize for that, I just, I have to say that because I've been in this field for 30 years and it's changed. And so many people have come to me and said, thank you for having children, adolescents, adults included because my child is now more compassionate, my family is more accepting. And I'm not going to make it, you know, a Pollyanna view of it, but that's been something in my experience. So I digress, I apologize.
Okay, I've run into a, this is an actual experience that occurred, that unfortunately happened. I used to work up in my main office up in Yonkers. And that's at One Executive Boulevard in Yonkers. And it was a Saturday, I believe, and I was working, I was in the middle of the day and this young boy wandered into my office. There was nobody else in my office, just me. And this young boy walked in and was kind of mumbling and talking and I couldn't make out what he was saying. And all I said to him was, being that he was talking very softly, I elevated my voice a little bit and I said, can I help you? And I noticed that the minute that you start questioning them, they get very, very alarmed. They get, I was told that this young boy had a form of autism.
Autism, sure.
And started to elevate his voice and started to get panicky. So at that point, I realized that, okay, I've just encountered somebody that I really don't know anything about and I know that he's getting agitated and I know that he's getting elevated with his voice. So now I better start tonying down a little bit, see if I can calm him down. And I said, I just have to make a call. And he sat there and I called the police. They showed up and I found out that he broke away from a nearby home. My worry is what I said before. I want the town to know that these individuals may not know how to interact. And there's a serious issue here because of the fact that they wander onto a property, fall in the pool, drown, God forbid. They encounter, they enter onto a property because they broke away, this could happen. And it has happened. And you've heard, Mr. Silverstein, is it?
Yeah, Jay.
Said so himself. So we are now facing that. We are facing that very, very good possibility of that happening. When we first bought the house in Fort Solanga, we saw nothing but a beautiful, one acre zoning privacy and the investment, if you, for some people, it wasn't investment, for some people, maybe it wasn't. This is, in my family, an investment. But we also enjoy living there as well. We saw that investment grow. I have a mother and daughter there. I want to make sure that my grandchildren are safe. I want to make sure that my wife is safe. I want to make sure that the neighbors are safe. If we can't have someone that doesn't know how to interact, what happens then? If we have dogs on the property, which we do, how does that happen? How does that interaction if the autistic person can't deal with it? What do you do then? It becomes a safety hazard. And it's a real issue. This is not something that should be taken lightly. We see our investment growing, which is nice. We also see our taxes growing, your tax deferred, from what I understand in that letter. Thanks to the town of Smithtown, you notify us about that.
Correct.
So where does that tax go? That tax enough, it's an unfair question to ask you that question, but I know that the town board hopefully will answer that question.
We are, just so you know, that we are actively working on that situation with our state representatives.
So they somehow will subsidize that tax?
I don't know, we're going to question them on what we do to make sure that our first responders, medical resources, they get paid out of those tax dollars. So we are in the process of bringing that to our state representatives to see what kind of cure they can come up with.
Now, the other concern I have is that parking on the street, along with my neighbor's concern, because I live directly opposite that house. My concern is that we had some school buses in the past that were, let's say, about 7:30 in the morning or 7 o'clock in the morning. They would park on that area there because it's not a heavily traveled area back then. Now it is, unfortunately. But the problem, the thing that I'm trying to bring to the attention of everybody is the fact that the, they would, before they started their route, they would run their Beazel school bus trucks. And we are on a higher elevation. Bad enough, we get the increase of fumes from the traffic of cars and trucks accelerating more when they go up the hill, the upgrade of 25A, pass the light, going up towards Sumpkin Meadow Parkway. And when they accelerate, there's more fumes involved, traffic has increased tremendously. So we're the lucky recipients of those fumes coming up to us. Believe me, it's a lot. And what happens is, if there are going to be, and here's the concern, that I don't know how you're going to address this. Is there going to be, in fact, if there's an overflow parking necessary, if there's deliveries, if there's people that are visiting, if there's a get-together?
Holiday party, yeah, holiday party.
Holiday party, that's what you called it, okay.
Thanksgiving celebration. So I'm going to answer that question and I knew, I saw some hands go up and I'm, I'll stay after, we can talk. They would, they would follow the guidelines, restrictions and zoning guidelines of the block like everybody else.
So thanks to the town, does that mean that they are allowed to park in the street?
I don't know that particular area, I do live in Kings Park, but I'm not sure if that, obviously, from what I'm hearing here, there's no parking restrictions on the road, you can park in the street.
Okay, so the delivery trucks...
We don't, yeah, we...
What I, let me, Mr. Silverstein, let me just say this, so we can clear this up. Any type of issues like that, where there's parking situations in the neighborhood and there's problems with that, that is always something the resident can call the town of Smithtown and we will dispatch the proper people to go down, assess the situation and then we will be in touch with the agency. We have done that with one of the homes in St. James.
So our only outlet would be, or our only option would be to call the town?
If there's a problem, correct.
Correct, correct. And that's the way it gets resolved?
That's correct.
They get a warning, you know, not to do that again and it's up to the DCC, is it? Is that what you're, you're...
Executive Director?
No, you're...
Oh, CDD, CDD.
CDD, okay. Then it's up to you to follow through and correct that problem, correct?
Correct, correct.
What's to stop you from changing the occupants to a different set of occupants?
We would have to go through an entire new process to do that. There is no intention now, in the short or long-term future, to change this from seven individuals. And in answer to a prior question, how... And in answer to a prior question, how long are they gonna live there? This is their home. They hopefully will live there for long, healthy lives. That's our intention. Other question, I saw some hands up?
Hi, I just thought you had said, what is it, their daily day during the weekend? Because they're workers who are doing a week, like during the rest of the weekend. I know that that property, the front yard, there's really no backyard. So in the summertime, what will they be doing?
Yeah, they would be going to activities that the organization or the community sponsors, swimming, gyms, work.
Organized day, is that what they have?
The staff organizes their day, so they have outings, they have community trips. We're looking to put a, at the first level up, a vegetable garden, a little small basketball court in the front, you know, by the driveway, we're gonna make it a nice home for them.
By the driveway in the upper level?
Yeah. But not to, it wouldn't stop parking. It would just be a movable hoop that they could shoot baskets. Okay, yeah.
Are there visiting hours for these parents or children?
No, it's a home, so parents can visit when they want. But they're parents who have raised children with disabilities for twenty-one years, and I think when nighttime comes, they wanna go to bed and relax and sleep. So I don't think that would be a problem. But there are no visiting hours, per se.
But those children, I should say, young adults?
Young adults.
Are they from a specific area?
They're from, the part of the reason this town and area was selected is because, I looked before this meeting, the families are from Massapequa, Syosset, Smithtown, the local area, so it's centrally located for those families, so their children aren't, you know, that far away. So they're lo-
Massapequa is twenty-five miles away?
Yes, correct.
And that's far from the old?
Okay. But, yeah.
You mentioned staff several times already, staff, 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 staff. Could we get a brochure on the qualifications and the training of the staff? So we know what the staff is qualified to do or not to do? I mean, they're with these people twenty-four-seven almost. I'd like to see the qualifications of people like that. Their training, what schools they went to, what tests they did.
Interesting question. What I mean, I can tell you this, is we just redesigned our website. So please feel free to look at our website, centerfordd.org, I believe it is, it just was redesigned. As far as the training, there's no, there's not a pamphlet I can give you, or individual names and qualifications, but I can tell you that all our staff go through an orientation, they go through monthly, if not weekly, trainings. There are trainings required by OPWDD, Department of OMH. There are, like I said, criminal background checks, as there are motor vehicle checks that are ongoing. And we do a lot of staff development and supervision. They must be graduates of high school, there are graduates of associates, college, master's degrees involved in the staff, so.
What actions would you take, not you personally, but the organization? What actions would you take should that individual or individuals do the wrong thing? If they get into trouble?
Someone said we were a business, and that we're like a business. Well, we're a non-for-profit, mission-oriented organization, but we are a business, so we take care of business. And if there is a problem with our staff, we don't tolerate nonsense.
I'm not talking about the staff, I'm talking about the occupants. And the-
The, I'm less concerned about the individuals, because the occupants. We have staff supervision, we have a whole list of clinical services, departments, doctors if we need, who manage these young adults at their day program. So they're very well cared for.
Go to the house?
Not typically, we typically, they go to clinics like anybody else, but they're, the individuals typically aren't behaving in, you know, aver- misbehavior, per se. They're who they are. And just while I'm on it, then I get your question. When you described the reaction of that, and thank you, how you dealt with the individual with autism was honorable. Yes, I'm gonna tell you that what you described, I would think, I think is that behavior or response is you could just as likely get from an individual without disabilities. And I just wanted to note that, and I don't say that glibly, I say that honestly, that, and the variety of individuals with autism and disabilities is, the range is as great as it is typically developing individuals like us that we can see. It's a range, and they're all different, like people, and some might shut down and not look at you, others might, yes, if you speak in a harsh voice, might get flustered. It's a range, and it's like our society in general, that their range is similar. It may be more constricted because their intellectual level is different, but it's still a range of humanity and individual differences. So, thank you, yes.
If we go back to the garage with the two members? Your statements, do you still have to comply with the town's state county bill?
Absolutely.
Do they still have to include the original?
Yes.
That's correct. They will have to make application for that reconstruction to our building department, and they'll go through the same thing anybody else goes through. They'll have all the pertinent inspections, et cetera.
So in a sense, we're taking enablement, sending down the homes, and creating homes that are apartment-style living in our block? How do you even let that happen to the residents? How does it happen? I'm asking a question.
Well, my answer to you is, I said this before.
I mean, what can you do for us?
What I need you to understand, when you say, "What are we going to do for you?" We're doing everything that is within the power of the Smithtown town government that we can do when we cite one of these homes. That's what this is all about this evening. Understand, they're cited by the State Department of Mental Health, because of the Pateman Law. They close treatment facilities and hospitals, and they find places for people like this with disabilities to live, and it's done by the state of New York. That's why we are actively working with our state representatives on a number of issues.
So what are we gonna stop it? What can we do to go forward? Is this the right now?
I can't answer, there is, I don't believe there's anything you can do to stop it.
If you challenge Article seventy-eight?
Excuse me? Well, we can, I'd let the attorney speak to that. We've done exhaustive investigations, I'll let Mr. Jacobowski answer that question.
I've spent, for the past number of years, I've spent a lot of time looking at this issue. I have not come across one Article seventy-eight that was successful. I also, I got a copy of all the decisions. If the, say the town was to object, it would go to the state agency first. I got a copy of all decisions made by the state agency for the last ten years. Not one challenge from a local government was upheld, not a single one.
I do see that there is a trend now, you know, that, like, Boe, Westchester, White Plains, the municipalities are starting to challenge it, because, what I understand is that because we have no legislation on the word concentration, right? Or like the nature and character. I believe your last challenge was because there was two group homes on that street, was that correct?
Yes.
Okay. But it's arguable, I guess, so, to answer your question, when we bail our Article seventy-eight, our town attorney would pursue it, then you could go, you go to Supreme Court and something, correct?
Correct.
We're not gonna do that, we just don't want that to happen.
Well, that's the problem, right? So because, um-
This is just, this is just, um-
But the challenge is, is that because we don't have the legislation, we don't have, you know, precedents to rely on. So I, I mean, just from researching locally on Long Island, a lot of places are now, municipalities are starting to challenge, because what are you gonna lose at this point? We, I mean, concentration of forty-two is a lot for the town of Smithtown. I was surprised, I went looking around at different locations. The one that, I mean, the one that ultimately, we had Kings Park Psychiatric Center, right? And they said they closed down the housing, but they left open the two homes, the one and two one, to, and what I found out from speaking to someone is that, that the only way you can get in there through the federal government is either you're getting released from jail, you're coming from St. Catherine to one of the hospitals, or you are getting, you're coming straight from Children's Hospital. So what my concern with that part is that you see people that are supposed to be, you know, are supposed to be watched, they're in Kings Park all the time, whether it's winter, whether it's summer, and it has an effect. There's a lot of young mothers with young children who, when you're sitting there coming out of Rita's Isis, that there's people there that look to be that they could be dangerous. And I know that they've been told on several paths. So that was really my concern, the concentration level. Where is it going to stop? I mean, this home sounds very, sounds very safe, it sounds very controlled in this environment. But when is Smithtown, when is it gonna be enough? Because we don't put up at some point and say, "Listen, forty-two, we need to really recognize this and take this to a judge and say, 'How many more?'" Because you're changing the dynamic of our neighborhood. You know, I appreciate, and thank you, I think it sounds lovely. I mean, I live like a walkover, it sounds, it sounds fine. My issue with it, it is a very dangerous corner, and it is very unsafe, because people are traveling up twenty-five A, going to Sunkin Meadow, jump so they can jump on, going to wherever they're going. It's fast. And that car wash is also, as if related, car wash, people are flying. And then there's no stop at the end of the road because you're merging. So there's a secret, and what I was saying, what I was trying to say with the front garbage, you have two people supervising seven young men. One has to go to the bathroom, and they're outside in the sun. Like, one, they can travel, that's a dangerous road for them.
During the day, there would be three, minimally, yeah.
So, so like, you know, if you're going outside, whatever they're doing, it's a danger. I'm talking about them, because people are flying. And it's only front yards, there's no backyard of that house.
Just, yeah. Did you want to address anything, or?
No, just, I'll let you continue. I just want the folks to understand that we, to answer, or to address your concerns and your questions, we are actively setting up our case to bring to our state representatives. We realize that there is an uptick in these homes being cited based on the fact that many of these individuals are now aging out, where they have to leave a DDI facility, and there has to be a place for them to go by law. So we're compiling all the issues, we're all residents here as well, all the issues that come up, saturation, the concentration issue, how many are cited in Smithtown. Specifically important to us is the tax reduction. We lose the property taxes on all those homes. And connected to that is emergency services. They also lose the funding. And they do use emergency services probably more than the average resident does. So I just want you folks to know that this town board, we're aware of it. We are putting our case together, and we will be bringing that to Senator Flanagan and Assemblyman Fitzpatrick to voice our concerns on your behalf.
So just to know what that, the taxes, what you're saying, so when I was looking at the, particularly that street and going to the tax practices and so forth, from there on, so it's my understanding, because they're taxing them, they really just have to pay, and four hundred dollars for the garbage, correct? Like, and I believe they have to, in that hub alone, the bare minimum, people are paying between twenty to seventy-five thousand in taxes. And that's about the bump up.
Correct.
So like, it's a little bit like, you know, and if God forbid there's gonna be garbage, people are gonna go crazy, you know? So, and I guess, I'm sure you're gonna be filing property orders. But you, you know, the area, it's just, it's changing a dynamic. I've seen it, the switchovers, a lot of young families, there's like Fort Solange Elementary, and we have Parkview, and lots of buses coming back for it. There's gotta be, on my street alone, there's five or six different buses coming at all times, because you range from the elementary to the high school, which at all different times. So, yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot. So you have people, and we were not notified over on the other part, and, you know, it's scary that our neighborhood was supposed to be founded on a single-family, but, and it's, for us, it's changing the nature.
And that's, again, we are going to relay that to our state representatives.
So how will, how will the people?
Mr. Chalmers?
Yeah, well, we, the-
He has to get approvals from the state of New York.
We're still, this is part of the approval process, and at the end of this process, then we get, we move on and get final approval. We propose to the town what changes we would like to do to the house. We have to wait for that approval.
I don't care about the state, we all have to care about what the town of Smithtown, when the many of the-
The town of Smithtown will get involved when they make application to do any of the renovation work.
Just on building, on first?
Correct.
So you have to set up first?
Correct.
So we have, the town of Smithtown has nothing to say about stopping this, and the parks?
That's correct.
So then with my, you know, all this discussion?
Right.
As soon as this goes forward, what will be done by the town about the intersection? With the increased traffic and the vans, which will create more blind spots when they're already very blind. I have a baby, there's lots of dead deer in front of her house already. The increased traffic is just gonna create more of them. I don't want her growing up, paying all this money to live here, for her to walk out and see that all the time.
As far as what, you're talking about?
The intersection of Fort twenty-five A and Fort twenty-five A, where this house, and my house are practically on that corner.
Right. Where we would get involved is the town, is if the home is cited, and there are problems, traffic problems, with that intersection, you would notify the town, we'll have our traffic safety engineers look at that.
There's already significant problems with this intersection, we're supposed to be for a traffic, we need to have it-
Okay, well, I personally am not aware, I don't know if anybody on the board is, we're not aware, we have been not contacted about any problems with that intersection that I'm aware of, at all.
Jay, are you, are you based on your mandate, do you have to get a traffic impact study? And there's an architectural survey that you have to submit to the town? Do you, do you need to do that?
No.
Okay, so that's not required for you? So that's something the town may look into, if it's a safety issue?
Yeah.
And the resident needs to tell the town, if there is an issue over there, then you have to, to tell the town?
Right. All of that will be included in our meetings with the state.
You mentioned, I'm sorry, and I'll let you go, but something about the back yard. I know that property very well, there is a very, very small area outside the rear of the house. And it has a retaining wall that goes maybe about three and a half, four feet, made out of decorative block. Problem that I see is, because again, being there forty years and helping the owners out as much as possible, and being there as many times as I have been, the fact of the matter is, there's areas that go below the level of the road elevation. And it's right before the curb that I'm talking about in the driveway. And it's very easily, it can very easily be a access point for any number of cars off of twenty-five A to veer off and come into that property and drop right in. And there have been, if you check with the DOT, the reason how I know is because we hear the ambulances, we hear the police cars, we see the accidents from where we're situated in our residence. And it's horrible. It's really just horrible, because of the fact that increased traffic flow has really been astounding. It really has. As I mentioned before, it was a novelty to hear a car before, now it's a novelty not to hear a car or a truck, or buying, and that's a heavily traveled route. And there have been a lot of accidents. If I called the DOT tomorrow, and if I asked for the statistics, I'll bet you dollars to donuts that that area has more than its fair share of accidents on that roadway. Because of the steep incline, people don't know how to drive in bad weather. A car could very easily go off that twenty-five A, there's no guardrail whatsoever. You know what's there right now? And I have the pictures. What's there right now was put up by Sal Supper, who was the last owner of that house. And he put up a, he put up a decorative guardrail, which is the best that he could do. And that is what you use on a stoop. That's not gonna hold anything. That's gonna prevent, that's not gonna prevent a car from veering or preventing it from dropping into that property that is being proposed for this use. And another thing that I don't understand is, uh, seven, you're planning on seven?
Correct.
Individuals to live there?
Correct.
Okay. Is that permitted by the town?
This is a family. That's not permitted by the town, that's set by, New York state law deems the house to be a family unit, so, two-family housing?
Unit?
Yes. So it qualifies as a single-family unit.
But they're not family?
New York state law tells us that it is.
No, what you're saying is, uh, town attorney?
Yes.
You're saying that they're recognizing this as a unit because they are a home for these individuals.
I'm saying that the-
Is that it? Is that right?
Yes, the state law deems them a family unit.
But if they were not a home, that would not be a permitted use, correct?
If it's a family unit, of course.
If they were not this organization, and you want them to put seven individuals living in there and do renovations to have seven bedrooms, wouldn't they need a permit? Wouldn't they need?
It, it would depend on the circumstance, but specifically addressing group homes, they're deemed a family unit.
And it's a permitted use?
According to the state.
I have a letter from Mr. Silverstein, correct? That's the best way I pronounce your name?
I'm, yes, Silverstein, Jay Silverstein.
Silverstein. And here's what I don't understand, and please, correct me if I'm wrong, your letter, if you go to, um, CDD currently operates twenty resident, twenty residential programs in the Nassau and Suffolk Counties throughout our sixty-one-year history of providing quality residential care. That's wonderful, it's great, it's nice, you are, you are providing a service to people who are in need, and I understand that. Then it goes further, as per section forty-one point three four, your municipality, meaning our town, has forty days from the receipt of this notice to either, A, approve this proposal for this site, B, suggest one or more suitable sites, sites within your municipality which could accommodate such a residence, C, object to the establishment of a residence of the kind described by the sponsoring agency, because to do so would result in such a concentration of community residences for the developmentally disabled in the municipality of this area. Please give me your name.
Marin Brockton.
Say again?
Marin.
Marin. Marin has, on the numerous, a number of times, has stated that there is, there, there, that the use of these people, um, is it permitted? Am I right?
Before you went home?
Yeah, the saturation.
Yes.
The saturation of so many of these homes are, I'm using the word saturated, why? Because it's, it's correct, it's a correct perception of what, what, what really exists.
It's grown, it's grown.
Say again?
It's more now than the last time we did the articles of need.
And the other thing is, they bought the house, from what I understand from Mr. Silverstein, their organization bought the house already. So, there was another gentleman that said, right there, I, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't get your name.
I'm Sid.
He said, "Is this a done deal?" And I have to be honest with you, there's a lot of people in this room, I'm sure, asking the same question, is this a done deal? Is the town really looking to see if there is another area of the town that maybe would not affect Fort Solanga as much? Would there be another area? Are they actively looking? Are they really looking to see if there is another area? So we're not impacted.
I would defer to the town attorney, and I-
The objections which you raised, so, the, the state legislation allows us to do three things, just simply approve the site, or object based on P and, B and C that you read. There's never been a successful, successful challenge in the courts or to the state agency based on B and C.
Okay, so, again, I'll answer the question, because I don't think you answered my question, and that is, are you actively looking for another site?
No, because they have never been accepted by the state.
But because what?
They have never been accepted by the state.
So, here's what I'm getting from this, I'm not an attorney, I'm just a poor schlep that works every day to try and put food on the table and make a living, and I'm unfortunately retiring now, and, it's amazing, it really is, this is disgusting. Why, the state looks like it's running the ship.
They are.
And it sounds to me like the town of Smithtown, which I know cares for its residents, is unfortunately being driven by the state.
That's correct.
So what recourse do we have as residents to fight this? What recourse?
We are going to, again, compile all the information, and we're gonna take this to the state representatives, that's, that's our only alternative.
But it sounds to me like, no matter what is sent to the state, the state overrules.
At this point, that's correct, but my point is, we are compiling a case to take to our state representatives, to explain our residents' concerns with this. We, we don't necessarily disagree with anything, not only this group is saying, any of the other proposals that we've had, where we had the agency come in here, we, we under, we, we live here, we understand it, um, many of your concerns are absolutely correct, our only alternative is to take it to the state representatives and fight with them to make them understand what's going on.
So, let me, let me just ask this question, when you do that procedure, and I'm assuming it's a procedural thing with the attorney, presenting that to the state, yes, when you do that, is that done in writing? Is that done in the hearing? Is that done, how is it done?
It's, it, this is how we will do it. We are putting this case together on much of what we've discussed here this evening, all right, and we also have, we have information also on a number of these residents. The first order of business will be to put that together, and then I will be convening a meeting with Assemblyman Fitzpatrick and Senator Flanagan, to explain the concerns of our residents, and then it will be up to them to take it to their state agencies to figure out what the state is going to or not going to do.
And do the residents have any ability to be present when that is done?
No.
To voice their opinion, or it's going to be this by-
You could, you could certainly voice your opinions to your state representatives, you can call their offices, you can write to them.
This is a good suggestion, what you're doing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you give us a list of the names of the state?
Yes.
Representatives, the legislators?
Yes, I'll save your information.
Well, I mean, it should be given to everybody here in this room, and, and here's another thing that I don't, and I find, maybe you're following the law, I understand, you know, that's what you have to do, why two hundred, excuse me, five hundred feet that people would notify? This is one acre zoning, I mean, my frontage alone is a hundred and fifty-some-odd feet.
Right.
So maybe you, maybe you've, in effect, notified three houses, maybe, maybe we got lucky, four houses, and there was an individual that came up and said, "If it wasn't for somebody, thank God for that person, because that's how I notified him, that's how I got notified," and, uh, someone put something in our mailbox, that's how we knew, we didn't know otherwise, I wouldn't be here, I'd be still at home taking care of my wife, who's very ill.
Well, we, we actually, we notified thirty-six homeowners.
Say again, I'm sorry.
We notified thirty-six homeowners.
Thirty-six homeowners?
Yeah.
By, by registered mail?
Certified mail, certified.
Certified, okay, sorry. All right, that's important, because I, you know, we, I'm sure the people in this room wanna fight this.
I'd like to make, ask some questions when you, right about that here.
Say again, I'm sorry. I keep, I'm sorry, I-
I'd like to make, ask a bunch of questions, but I want to wait till you're done, I was about to stand up.
Okay, can I take them too much time, or?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Silverstein.
Hi.
So, a lot of the questions, I have, I have several questions already, that I haven't asked by the community here tonight, so I can kind of bear with me, I'm gonna ask all of my neighbors, because I kind of read reviews, I don't, I don't, I have a question, uh, it's not, so I'd just like to hit, you know, hit at some things, I try to go ahead like this, as opposed to conquering over it for hours, but I can, you know, some answers. How, how has CDD been rated by the state? For example, is there a rating system, uh, as to, you know, are there accolades, are there, you know, is there any sort of award, or anything to be giving, uh, out there? Out there, by, 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 or?
There, there's no formal rating, as you dis, as you referenced, that I'm aware of, um, when there are problems, they become public notification, um, we've had, I took over as the executive director a year ago, I've been involved with the agency for two years before that, that, we have a very good reputation within the community and throughout the state.
Okay, so, a, a word that could mention by, by residents tonight, uh, a legal term, but I'm curious from your standpoint, the word saturation, when you go and look-